For tonight's session, before we continue, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as it's been...
Second.
Any questions on this? There are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Before we continue, please join us in the floor.
...certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move directly into tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda as they are presented?
Motion second.
All right, any questions? You've got bills for payment, financials, quite a few different items there. Questions, comments? If none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Not opposed. Motion carries. All right, we'll then turn it over to our reports for the night. Our first report this evening is from the American Heart Association. Welcome.
I can't believe it's been a year since I've been here. I can't believe this has flown by. Thank you. I said, "Wait a minute, something happened in this room." You guys got a face load. It's beautiful. So, I'll let him pull up my car point and I'll brag at you guys some for the first week though, okay? I got a phone call from our superintendent and our internet was down, so they went back to the basics all day today, you know, no internet. All of them across the district, so they should use paper and pencil. I don't know. Anyway, so I'm Kiri Bakar. I work with the American Heart Association and your amazing PE teachers here in Hillsborough. And you guys have a fond spot in my heart. I just love coming here and I think if I ever got promoted, I would have a hard time giving away this school as well. Anyway, I'm here to brag on just the amazing partnership that we have with your community. So, Hillsborough School District is part of 16,000 schools across the country that participate in Kids' Heart Challenge or American Heart Challenge and partner with us. We reach over 10 million families across the United States to share the importance of taking care of your heart and helping others with sick hearts. And... There we go. Okay. So, last year we celebrated a milestone birthday of 100 years. And I just like to point this out. Since we were founded, right, we've cut cardiovascular disease and that couldn't happen without the support of communities like yours. We educate over 20 million people a year in hands-only CPR. The deaths of stroke have decreased by 34 percent. So, there's some pretty staggering statistics there. I want to share a story. I've been meeting with kids who do Kids' Heart Challenge with us. The families can check off if they have a heart survivor in their family or if their child's a heart survivor. So, I met with a mom, a mother of three. She's triplets. And her one has congenital heart defect. And she said it all started with a stethoscope at the pediatrician's office. And she said, "One checkup in August, and two months later, my baby was having open-heart surgery." So, it's just staggering. You know, one in three Americans are impacted by heart disease. And you all are making a difference. Right here in Missouri, we have over $60 million worth of studies happening. A bulk of it right up in St. Louis at, you know, our amazing universities and hospitals that are out there. We're also focusing a lot on CPR and AEDs. Our advocacy, we help push through the SERP legislation. I'm hoping as a school board, you know what I'm talking about when I say the SERP legislation, that it's required in all of your schools or in every school district to have that cardiac emergency response plan. So, we were instrumental in that. And then also just making sure that anyone that we can get in touch with, they understand the steps for hands-only CPR. And then nutrition security, and then really pressure screening. So, that's been a focus of ours. This year, the main reason why I'm here is I want to celebrate four amazing people. Molly Becca, Erin Holly, Erin Boss, who I heard crossed over the line a little bit there, and Casey Speed. So, collectively, those three schools, primary, elementary, and intermediate, raised over $20,000 for the American Heart Association, which is amazing. We touched over 1,800 families in the community. And in return, we gave your schools $2,000 back in US games that they could use for PE equipment or different things that they need in their schools. And this year, you guys are ranked number two for rural school districts in the state of Missouri. So, give yourselves a round of applause. And I know none of this is a surprise to you, but this is why we do what we do and why we partner with schools. We know that if a child goes into cardiac arrest, less than one in five survive because people don't know what to do. So, this has been my new thing I've been doing with school boards. We've been doing a little test. Are any of you in the medical profession that are out there, because if that, if you are, you can now answer my question. Okay, so, for hands-only CPR, how many beats or how many beats per minute should you be pressing on the center of your chest when someone is going into cardiac arrest? Do you want to take a guess?
A child?
Or sixty?
We're going to average more than sixty.
Ninety?
More than ninety. Hundred to hundred and twenty beats per minute, okay? So, there's two songs that I like to tell the kids, right? "Stand Alive," "Stand Alive," you're counting, right? And then the other one is "Baby Shark," right? So, that's another one that we tell the kids, right? We also, we also, you know, we know that depression is high, anxiety is high in kids. And we know that the physical activity piece of it is so important, right? So, the more that kids can be active, the more they're in their PE classes and moving and grooving. We know that that helps with that anxiety piece of it and the depression. Sixty minutes per day. Only 20% of American kids are getting 60 minutes of exercise a day. That's pretty sad. So, what can you do to continue to help us celebrate your schools? Make sure that you share it on social media, which you guys do a great job when we have celebration events here. Continue to support that state and federal legislation piece with the AEDs and the CPR training, making sure that you have that. One thing is the state of Missouri has put funds into a grant program through MEMSA. And I believe you guys have Title I schools here, so you will be eligible for those grants. So, be looking out for funds to help you with the AEDs and the CPR training that you'll be required. We're just trying to figure out the logistics and how it's going to flow. So, as you kind of dig a little bit deeper, reach out to me, and I'll try to reach out to my band information as well. And then finally, learning the steps of hands-only CPR and stroke. So, my second quiz for you today. We use the acronym FAST for stroke, okay? I worked for the American Heart Association, was going on my seventh year. And this summer, I had my mom with me and my friend see the car, and it was a really, really cool day in Missouri. No, I'm just joking. I was like in the 100 degree degrees. And my mom was in the front seat, and she went down. Face drooping, slouched in the front seat of my car, right? And I knew what to do because of my work with the American Heart Association, right? I knew that she was having a stroke. So, the F stands for face drooping, A, R weakness, S, speech slurred, right? She had mush mouth. She wasn't making any sense. And T, time to call 911. So, you guys learned something tonight at your school board meetings. So, on behalf of the American Heart Association, these heart ambassadors across the United States, thank you, thank you, thank you for your support. I so appreciate you and your school communities. And we've already met, and we're all set for this year. So, looking forward to continuing this tradition. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll turn it over to Dr. Isaacson for the superintendent.
All right, just a short report this month as we're just getting started with school. A report that we've had a strong and smooth start in the school year. And that's a testament to the administrators in this room and the teachers and staff. Everyone that's worked with the students this week. And I also want to thank Dr. Maru and his team, Mr. Whitehead, and all the special education team, teachers and staff for just preparing the school and getting everything ready. It's kind of a big lift as we get ready for everyone to kind of come back in one week. Tomorrow, Friday, is probably going to be a long day here on campus with a five-day week right out of the gate. So, primaries probably those kids will sleep until midday, the rest is over. We start a couple of different things. I know I had sent a quick message to the board that the no cell phones has actually been as good as we could have planned. I hope that Missouri agrees with everything I've heard back in the not in their head. Yes, it really truly has been from the kids. It hasn't been that big of an issue. As we go on, it's going to be the ebbs and flows, but we'll really go on to the kids. And it's went off as good as it possibly could, way better than expected. And early childhood program officially starts Monday with the children arriving. Couple of different things I did just did want to mention as far as enrollment. So, I mentioned that on the first day, we had 300, excuse me, 3,110 students in grades K-12. On August 7th, we had 384. So, we had some late kind of enrollments and such spread throughout the district. One of the things just of note, because I think it will be impacting the district in the future. Our kindergarten class has rented 185 kids, thereabouts. And I did some more of the live birth projections on some of the latest data. That trend's going to continue. It's actually, there was a little bit of a bump in birth, but it's negligible as far as it's under 200 more than... I would say it's by 14 or 15, 1400 were born. That represents this year's kindergarten, next year's, it's right at 1500, 14, 1500. So, I anticipate about the exact same number. So, we do, at our government leaders meeting, did visit with Mr. Daniel and some of the construction going on. So, we'll see how that has some of the impact involved Jarvis and some of the other issues. So, just already kind of planning for the future versus school. So, we just wanted to share the report. Upcoming events, we have our MSBA regional meeting on September 3rd. And then also our POW MIA game is September 5th. We play Snoop and that, the ceremony again at 5:30.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Isaacson? All right, we'll move right into this evening's financial report.
Yes, the financial report is included in the board document for those at home. It's item number six, the district financial report. This month, it's kind of a short report as far as it's early in the fiscal year. And I did want to highlight some items. I visited with Ms. White this week as part of our kind of process when we go through the data. Is, as you can see, we received about $2 million in revenue for what, 64%? That's a little bit lower than the historical trends, but not much of a change. I did want to reference, if you go to the next page, which will show the county revenue. That shows actual, the date. We did receive a check, but we received it after the month of July, so it's early August. So, that's not necessarily zero to me, but as of July 31st. The next item that I want to point out is if you go to the next page is... Oh, not quite that far. I did want to point out on the activity fund, right there, there's $158,000 as an expenditure in July. Is one, that's not, within our activity funds, not just like sports, that is actually, we set up activity funds for our employee HRA, flexible spending account, limited use flexible spending accounts in order to properly from an accounting purpose. We didn't necessarily have them in our accounting software. So, Ms. White and her team set up accounts within our activity there. So, that's what that expenditure is in working through that there. So, I wanted to point that out. And then, if you scroll through to the area, that's 23, included the 23, 24, and 25, July. So, year over year, we have a comparison. But I do want to point out, 2023 is kind of an anomaly on that budgeted amount. So, it's not necessarily applicable. That's why I didn't do a three-year comparison for this month. So, if you go to 2025, all right, on this report, I did want to point out, Ms. White asked me as we were going through it, is if you could scroll up a little bit, I know this is kind of difficult from the screen. The board has it. Fund number 2190, other support services. As you can see, we had a budgeted amount of $2,600. We spent $12,953. That's because the money was sitting at a different place. And when Mr. Whitehead, I guess when he spoke, talked about it, that needs to be put, it needs to be put in a different budget adjustment from a state's standpoint. So, we have to have there, so it's an accounting thing. It's not, we're just, the money's not in that box when we have done it before. I have referenced the insurance, and that's under the staff services, 2540. Is, I think, that's that $155,000 on the activity insurance. So, you see how that all correlates there. On the expenditure revenue report, which is the next report there, I did want to highlight 6171. Classified used lead, that's our lead day stipend. We actually are over budget there, and we'll make that adjustment. That means that our employees had better attendance than we anticipated. And so, that was a little bit bigger checks going to staff going out there. On our certified staff, we were a little bit, we didn't spend as much as we thought we would. So, it's pretty close to balancing out within $10,000. And one other item I did want to point out, actually two. Other professional services, 6319, where it shows that we spent 81% of the money in the month of August. Two different items there. Schneider Electric, we have a program that monitors like our capital, equipment, and tracks all that. That invoice came in July versus June, so it got applied there. That was not anticipated in the budget as well as the SRO contract. You know, we do the budget, putting that together in early June. So, that number, that'll be updated on budget adjustment later on. And finally, just pointing out for knowledge for the board, when they see items such as item 6441 on that page, library books, is you see the budget amount of $40,000. And there hasn't been any money spent, but there's, it shows 32% of the budget. That's because the ladies have put the POs in, so that money's been accounted for. It just hasn't been pushed out. So, just wanted to share those particular items. And that is financial report.
Appreciate the insight. Any questions on the financial report? All right, we will move on. Thank you. Any items of public comments? Any public comments? So, that will take us to new business. And our first item is, is this new proposal?
It's only on JECV, which is student use of personal communication.
Just wanted to put that on our open session meeting tonight that we record. Is, we talked about that at the previous July meeting table, that the board did approve this policy at our work session so that it was in place from the start of school. It relates to the cell phones. And along with that, the policy is the exact same as it was presented in July with the addition of two administrative forms, one being for teachers requesting to use cell phones in a classroom. So, that process would go to the administrator, then ultimately to the program, to make sure that we maintain some fidelity there. And the other document is to have approval of the bring-your-own-device so that can be reviewed by the administrator and technology, and then have a stick-to-place data for any education apps. So, that's where we sit. Just wanted to put that public facing.
Any questions from the group tonight on any policy? We'll go on to some action items. Next on our list is approval of the bill for payment to Jefferson College. Do I have a motion to approve the bill for payment to the college of the amount of $2,000? Any questions on this page? Here are none. All those in favor? Opposed? Single extension? Motion carries. All right, next up is the approval of the 26 junior high trip to Washington, D.C. Do I have a motion to approve the travel opportunity for the junior high school to Washington, D.C.? It'll be coordinated by the junior high principal, Dr. Murphy, in partnership with company World Strides for the 25, 26 school year. Any questions?
I think traditional, this has always been done right. So, we're just moving it up to the junior high for that age group instead.
Any other questions? All right, here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the acceptance of a donation from the Hillsborough Youth Football and Cheer Group for a field lighting improvements down at the practice field. So, do I have a motion to accept a $27,900 donation from HYFC for lighting improvements at that practice field? And approve Reinhold Electric to complete that work as outlined? Any questions? This is a very generous donation from the Hillsborough Association. We think that this work could commence before season's over?
I would think so, yeah. We've already got quotes for it. And I know Brian's worked with them quite a bit, but yeah.
Thank you to that group for that donation, for sure. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval this evening? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the approval of the purchase of a new school bus. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a new 77-passenger Bluebird bus from Central States for a tour cost of $151,360?
Motion second.
Any questions?
Last year, we had three buses that were eligible for the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act. Two of them were selected. Those buses should be arriving in the next couple of weeks here in the middle of September. The third bus was placed as an alternate. We found out over the summer that bus was also, as an alternate, was selected. So, this year, we should receive right at $70,000 in grant money from the Diesel Emission Act. And so, this bus was just part of that third one. And it should arrive in around December.
Any questions? Here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to the approval of the contract with Burton Citadel Security Company. Do I have a motion to approve a three-year agreement with Burton Citadel Security Company for district monitoring services?
They are currently our company that monitors our entire district. And this was just a section that was added to the new section from 2017, the commons, cafeteria, the new front office or newer, and then the gym, that other section in the back. So, just a, just a section that we added. It's already, it's already in place in that building and all of our other buildings. It's just a new addition there.
Any questions on this agreement? Here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. Getting into the season of approving our tax rate, so we need to set that tax rate hearing date. Do I have a motion to approve the tax rate hearing from 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, September 25th, in accordance with Missouri requirements? All right, any questions on the tax rate hearing time? Here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the readoption of policy BBFA, which is with regard to board member conflict of interest and financial disclosure. Do I have a motion to readopt policy BBFA as presented? Something we do annually, is required. Any questions on this policy? Here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a second read of some policy revisions, 2025C? Do I have a motion to approve the policy revisions to 2025C as presented as seen? Any questions on this list of policies? All right, here are none. All those in favor of approval? Not opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we have two final items of new business tonight, the first of which is with the approval of a resolution to participate in the legal challenge to Senate Bill Number Three. Do I have a motion to approve resolution for the district's participation in a multi-entity legal challenge to the property tax credit provisions that are in Senate Bill Three and to authorize shared contribution towards those litigation costs? Any questions from the group tonight? Want to turn it over to Dr. Isaacson for any additional info that he can, he could share with us some progress in this area.
It was updated this afternoon that Warren County, Osprey is a plaintiff. And multiple political subdivisions, both locally and statewide, are, that would be impacted by this, are contributing, kind of joining that on a fiduciary standpoint. So, it's just, as I've said before, the board and the school district, the school district protecting, being committed to protecting the services our families rely on. Not just school, but fire, ambulance, libraries, mental health supports. This is joining with those other entities to just ensure that this is constitutional, that each citizen in Missouri is treated in the same manner. And this Senate Bill Three actually doesn't do it, so it's exploring that. So, there's been multiple agencies that have already addressed this, both in the county, locally, and as I said, statewide.